Can't hear you. Well, where?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the November fourteenth, two thousand and six, meeting of the Glendale City Council being called order at six oh seven P M. A real call.
Council members Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Eusefion.
Here.
And Mayor Weaver.
Here. The flag salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Manukian and the invocation by City Clerk Artie Kosakian. Please stand up.
Please join me in the salute to our nation's flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Glendale Character and Ethics Project, word for November is citizenship. The project encourages everyone to accept their rights, privileges, and responsibilities of living in our community and country. Tonight, let us remember what a privilege it is to live in this city and in this great nation. We were reminded of this recently on two separate but related occasions, Election Day and Veterans Day. In the wake of these important occasions, let us pray for the blessings of liberty that we are so fortunate to appreciate. Let us pray for the success of Glendale, for California's success, and the success of the United States of America, to remain strong and prosperous. With guidance and courage, let us face the challenges before us this evening, ever mindful of the greater good and purpose that we all serve. We pray for this and for the health of our families and loved ones. Amen.
Thank you. Then we have your report.
The agenda for the November fourteenth, two thousand and six, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, November ninth, two thousand and six, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you, and what's next?
Next is presentation and appointments at three A is Agenda Preview for the meeting of November twenty-one, two thousand and six.
And for the first time, I think I'm going to Zazet Ayad, your first try at this.
I gave it a try.
Let's be easy on her. Go right ahead.
Mayor Weaver, councilmembers, the agenda for the Glendale Housing Authority for November twenty-first. First business on the agenda is the cancellation of Housing Authority meeting for December twenty-six, two thousand and six, and January second, two thousand and seven. Agenda for the Glendale Redevelopment Agency for November twenty-first is the City Attorney regarding cancellation of Redevelopment Agency meeting for December twenty-six, two thousand and six, and January second, two thousand and seven. We have a joint public hearing for the Glendale with the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, Director of Development Services regarding Montrose Shopping Park and Adams Square Merchants Association's budget for calendar year two thousand and seven. Second item is the Director of Development Services regarding renewal of the Business Improvement District in the Adams Square Business District area. We have another joint meeting with the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority, Director of Community Development and Housing regarding status of program planning for fiscal year two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, CDBG, ESG, and home annual action plan. And last, City Council agenda for November twenty-first, we have an adoption of ordinance regarding ratification of two percent public education and government PEG cable access fees. And the Director of Public Works regarding proposed vacation of beacons way and portion of airway in the Glendale Vacation Case Number One Five Six V. Director of Public Works regarding furnish and maintain bus shelters, benches, and refuse containers, advertising panel, and other outdoor furniture in the city of Glendale. Director of Glendale Water and Power regarding addition of two offices and one single USA ADA compliant restroom at eight hundred airway. Director of Public Works, Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services, and Director of Glendale Water and Power regarding addition of Chapter four point one four to the GMC nineteen ninety-five relating to the department and suspension of contractors. Director of Planning regarding certification of final environmental impact report for Harvard Cedar Mini Park. And we have a hearing of Director of Planning regarding appeal of Design Review Board Case Number One, P D R, two thousand and five dash one forty-three for property located at two four zero Sleepy Hollow Terrace. And that concludes the agenda for November twenty-first.
That was good. That was flawless.
Why don't you stick around for the rest of the evening? I think I will.
I knew you would. What else? The rest of the way on business, so Zazet has to stay the evening.
Thank you.
Too bad. Instead of watching us on TV, you get to sit here and watch directly. Okay, what is next, please?
At three B is recognition of the Glendale Altrusa Club for their generous contribution to the library for its book group to-go collection.
And will those come forward? I'm presenting two. And may I apologize right out? You already had a luncheon, didn't you? Didn't you all have a luncheon already?
I ate luncheon.
Is it tomorrow?
Would you like to come?
I already am scheduled. I've never been so busy in my life. I mean, I've made every one of your events, and tomorrow's gonna be the first one I miss. Anyhow, I'm gonna read this proclamation, and Mr. Manukian will bring it down. To the Altrusa Club of Glendale, in recognition of your generous contribution to the library for its book group to-go collection, they will label community book groups to more easily obtain the titles they need. Commend you for encouraging the citizens of Glendale to read books and join book groups. It is with the support and big hardness of groups like yours that make Glendale a great place to live and work. So, Mr. Manukian.
By me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the mayor, I'd like to present the mayor's commendation. I don't think we emphasize libraries enough in the city, and I want to thank you and the Altrusa Club for emphasizing the libraries and reading of the book, reading books in the city of Glendale. So congratulations and thank you. Keep it up. Who do I give this to? Nancy? No?
I'm Altrusa.
Hi.
Mary Allen, who did the work and created the idea.
Congratulations.
And I hope that it'll grow and grow.
Oh, absolutely.
Somebody can speak.
You know, a book group is a group of individuals that gets together and reads the same book and then talks about it. And we're very fortunate in Glendale because there are all kinds of book groups meeting in their workplaces, houses of worship, friends and neighbors who meet at restaurants, et cetera. And the problem is that although we live in a very literate community like Glendale, sometimes people have trouble getting so many copies of the same book. So these book kits have fifteen copies of the same book and a notebook with author information and discussion questions and book reviews. So it's everything that a book group would need in Glendale. And the Altrusa Club very graciously funded this innovative project for the Glendale Public Library. So it's going to serve a lot of people in Glendale.
Congratulations.
And thank you very much. We do hope that it continues and grows, and we get into the high schools and the junior high schools and teach them how fun it is to read and share.
Well, a lot of great things started very small and grew, so maybe you have something there.
Think so.
Congratulations and thank you for that novel idea. Okay, and what is next, please?
Next is commendation for the Glendale Historical Society for its two thousand and six centennial home tour.
And who's coming forth on this one? Any historical people here? Oh, I recognize her. Arlene Vedora? Let me read the proclamation here.
I think there are a few people who participated in the tour, and I hope they'll
Come up.
Come up.
Stand over here, though.
We had a huge committee.
We're getting new cameras, and they're stationary. They're not moving around yet.
What happened to our historical cameras?
They were donated to the garbage heap, I guess. Okay, I'll read the... Ms. Vedora, is okay if I read the proclamation first?
Absolutely. Please do.
The commendation presented by Mr. Quintero. The Glendale, presented to the Glendale Historical Society, congratulations on the success of the two thousand and six centennial home tour, representing the architectural excellence of Glendale homes of the last one hundred years. The city of Glendale applauds your commitment to preserving and celebrating Glendale's rich history and architectural heritage for future generations to appreciate and enjoy. Thank you for your commitment to excellence.
Thank you very much.
And now, do we, you're gonna give us a little presentation?
Thank you, Mayor Weaver. We really appreciate it. One of the things that we heard about this tour from all over, not just in Glendale, but far and wide, was how spectacular the diversity of the architecture was. People told us it was better than any tour they were in in Pasadena and all these other places. So that really felt good, and I think the fact that we had such a wide range from the from the very old antiquated and beautiful, such as Ardeveen, to the mid-century and on into the contemporary, was really special. And I want to recognize the people who are here with me. These are some of the main players, so I'll mention them. Catherine Yamada, Margaret Hammond, Mike Resnick, Peter Rush, and Judy Cabrera, and of course, we had others, John Lacasio, Isabel Meyer, and Patricia Messina, who was the tour chair. We're gonna honor her at our annual meeting on Thursday, and Terrence Hines both played a really pivotal role in this thing. But there were many, many people involved, and they all worked really hard. And we'd like to do another tour, so we're... This is a call to anybody who has a cool house, no matter when it was built. Please get in touch with us, and we'll include you on the next one, because we think we should do it again. So this is, the centennial year is the beginning. And I have a little set of pictures from the tour that I'd love to share with everybody. Unfortunately, I had a technological problem, and some of the pictures didn't make it from my Mac to this PC, so there's blanks. But what I will do is we'll put them on our website, www.glandalehistorical.org, so people can look at them. But why don't we just go through the ones we have here now? So, Zazet, thank you. Okay, I will mention Patricia in a minute. Ardeveen was, I'm going by order of age of house. I think everybody knows Ardeveen. It's a pending National Register listing, so this is gonna be a national landmark in Glendale soon. You can, you can go through these, Zazet. This is, just keep going through them, otherwise we'll never get through. I just wanted to show you some detail from Ardeveen, and this was the next house, Hewitt Baker, which is a craftsman-style house, really unusual in Glendale. Jeff Curdie and Ken Martinez were very generous to offer their home to the tour, and they want, they couldn't be here because they're out of town, but they wanted to tell everybody to thank City Council for Mills Act support, because without the landmark listing and Mills Act contract program, they would not have been able to do the renovation they did. So here's some more detail from their house. And then this one is another beautiful craftsman owned by Robert and Mary Bush. Thank you, Robert and Mary, for including your house on the tour. Elliott House by Ralph Wilcox. It's a beautiful batch elder fireplace, dining room, some wood detail, and the beautiful elevations of the house. And then here's Derby House. Everybody knows Derby House, owned by Carol and Michael Doherty. Thank you, Carol and Michael. This house was designed by Lloyd Wright, the son of Frank Lloyd Wright, and it's on the National Register of Historic Places. Oops, there's some missing pictures, unfortunately. All of them. Oh, too bad. Well, we'll get them on our website, so I want everybody to see these pictures, and I know everyone behind me does also. This is Peterson House, the next on the list, built nineteen twenty-eight, a really beautiful example of a Spanish colonial revival, owned by Migdia Shania. Thank you, Migdia. And here's some detail. That's a magnesite staircase, the original staircase in this house, original fireplace, and an original tree. That's a seventy-plus-year-old olive tree, and all the landscaping in the front of this house is from when it was built. And then we'll just skip over this, and I'll describe the Rodriguez House. This house is very famous. It's owned by Michael Murray and Kelly Jones. Thank you, Michael and Kelly, for participating in the tour with us. This is Rudolph Schindler's Rodriguez House, one of his masterworks, and, you know, a real mid nineteen forties masterpiece, but stood the test of time for sure. And we can scroll through this, and you can see some of the beautiful detail. Well, not much of it, but that's the back elevation in the garden. You can see how beautifully it blends into the local landscape. The next house is Conway House, which just came on the radar screen. Mike did a little bit of sleuthing and was able to find this house, and the owner, Tom McIntyre, graciously offered it for the tour. And it is a real classic nineteen fifties mid-century masterpiece with extraordinary furnishings in it. So here are some pictures of the beautiful rooms, and, you know, this is one of those things where you start thinking outside the box about what's historic, what's architecturally significant, and this certainly has all the elements of an architecturally significant home, which we hope will be landmarked, and I think Mr. McIntyre is interested in that program. The next one here, Block House, is a classic seventies, kind of a glass box, if you want to call it that, post and beam, owned by Richard Block, the original owner. And it is not designated, of course, but it certainly is a candidate at some point for designation.
Do you think that would pass Design Review Board today?
Well, actually, I'm not even sure it did at the time. You know, it's amazing how these, some of these masterpieces, and there's one coming up that I'll mention in that regard, but here you go. This is really a classic, and, you know, somebody made a really great comment about this house that I have to share. They said, wow, this looks like the kind of house that Warren Beatty would put the moves on Julie Christie in. And, you know, we, that's what we thought, too. It's really a classic. So anyway, and here's a look at, and this one, I'm very sad that I think the pictures didn't come out. You can go ahead, Zazet. Let's see if we got at least one. Oh, dear. I am so sorry about that. I really...
Come back again.
Go to the woodshed on that one. But, but anyway, what that house was, that was the one I wanted to mention to you. That's the Rice House, owned by Aida and Vahe Yegizarian, who very generously offered it up with great enthusiasm for this tour. And that house actually did, I guess, go all the way to City Council, and there was a big fight about it, and it almost didn't make it. And it is considered now to be Gerald Lomax's masterwork, and he's a very prominent architect. So when we found out about the history of what it took to get that thing approved, we went, oh, my goodness. So anyway, stay tuned for the pictures on the Internet, and we're certainly happy to give them to the city if they want to use some of them on the scrolling picture thing on, on the city's homepage.
You can always come back during oral communication and show them.
Yes. And before I leave, yeah, okay, that sounds good.
I'd like to see that, Al.
Okay. But before I leave, I failed to mention Sally McAller, the owner of Ardeveen at the beginning, who is constantly offering her house up for events. And also, I think Patricia's here, so would you please come up here and don't be shy? Come on, you're in show business.
I'm still winded from running.
And Patricia was the chair of our committee, and, and she's retiring from our board, sob sob, on Thursday. But anyway, she did a, I can't even tell you the logistics of a tour like this and what, what she went through. So thank you, Patricia, from the whole city of Glendale. Anyways, and thank you all. I'll hand, I'll give you brochures from the tour. The last remaining.
What does Ardeveen mean?
Heavenly view in Gaelic.
And a dead of that view in those days.
And thank you very much for this commendation. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Very encouraging.
Thank you. And what is next? Not that.
Mr. Mayor? Next is the City Council or staff comments.
Wait, wait.
Under presentations and appointments, Mr. Quintero and I had the opportunity to meet with candidates for the Arts and Culture Commission. We, we think we found a very great one in Ms. Geraldine Saunders, and we would like to place her on the agenda for appointment to the Arts and Culture Commission.
Creator of the Love Boat TV series.
She is a very talented lady, whose abilities span many different, different areas in the arts, many different.
Very nice lady.
We hope that she'll be able to invigorate the commission.
Okay, thank you. What is next, please?
City Council and staff comments.
I have one. Had a busy last four or five days, a number of events I went to. The classic was Sunday night, and for those that would have liked to sat and laughed at this mayor, you missed an opportunity. We had the president of the Democratic Party of South Korea here, and he was here to honor Master James Oh, who is a six-degree black belt in Taekwondo, and...
You didn't kick him, did you?
I'm getting to that. He has this, he's up in Locker Center, has his studio there. And I gave my speech and other things, and most of the communication was going on in Korean. And near the end, they asked me to come up. And they said, we're gonna confer an honorary black belt on you. And so the first thing I had to do was break, break a block of wood. You've seen them when they hold them up like this and you break it. I had to do that. So, take off your coat, and I'm standing there on a stage. They showed me how to do it.
Were they, was anyone taping?
No, thank God. But I broke it.
Was the block cracked in advance?
No, no.
Make it easier for you?
No. No, but...
Ball of also wood.
But I broke it. And they said, well, the next thing you gotta do is you gotta do ten push-ups. Ten push-ups? Can you do it? So I got down, I did ten push-ups. If it'd been twelve, I wouldn't have made it. But I did the ten, and so for that, they brought out the, the whole outfit, pants and the top of Taekwondo, and I got my black belt. And I don't wanna enroll, but they strapped that on, and they gave me a certificate that says I actually have a black belt in Taekwondo. Very different kind of a function I'd ever been to, and I didn't expect it, and if I knew what was gonna happen, I wouldn't have gone. But, but it was different. And then the, the president of the Democratic Party, Mr. Han, he had to do it, too. He had to break three pieces of wood, and he had to do fifty push-ups.
Fifty?
Fifty. Just so you know, he told me, in, in talking to him, that he was a political prisoner in jail in South Korea for four years, back seventy-nine on. And he's a quite interesting person. He speaks fluent English, so it made it very easy for me. So that was it. I just had to, this is very, very interesting. Okay, Mr. Eusefion.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if you think that's something, I got myself into something even crazier.
Really?
Yeah. I'm known for doing some crazy things once in a while.
Yes, you are.
And getting on a dunking boot and being dunked for Unity Fest and stuff like that. So on December first, in Alex Theater, every year, the symphony does a nice little gala, and it's for our Christmas. So Alex Theater, if you buy a ticket and you go to the Glendale Symphony Orchestra, you will see me conducting the Glendale Symphony for the National Anthem. So I will tell you about that much, but the rest of it, you have to be there.
What was that again?
I will be conducting the Glendale Symphony Orchestra on December first, two thousand and six, just for the National Anthem section of it. So come on in, and I'm pretty sure the, the rest of it will be very good, but it's gonna be interesting to hear that National Anthem. So I have to go to classes and learn how to conduct. So, so if you haven't bought your tickets, run out there, and you could see me making a fool out of myself in front of the symphony, but them being so professionals, I'm pretty sure they'll make me sound good.
Well, I hope somebody tapes it, because I want to hear that rendition.
Oh, I, I wanna tape it myself, so I could have it, because if I tell anybody else that I actually did that, nobody will ever believe it.
How many verses are they gonna conduct, Bob? I think it goes to five or six verses.
Wow, that's the whole thing, yeah.
And you have to count the verses.
Yeah, Roseanne Barr is gonna be the backup singer.
I hadn't thought about that. Maybe I should give her a call.
And I want to thank Glendale Harley Davidson and all of the people that contributed tons of money. I can't get over, I think they raised over two million dollars. And there were, there was one check alone from an insurance company that, that insures motorcycles for five hundred thousand dollars. And there were, they say, twenty to twenty-five thousand motorcycles. It seemed to be even more than that. And what I also noticed, I mean, this event keeps getting bigger and bigger every year, but what I also noticed was all of the cafes, all of the restaurants, there were just people everywhere. So I think it's a good economic engine for the city once a year to have all these motorcyclists in. Mr. Bob McFaul was most impressive with his beautiful bike, as well as Chief Gray, who happened to have the only Italian Tourina Prilla. In all of those twenty thousand-plus motorcycles, there was only one Prilla, and it was owned by Chris Gray. So it was a great event, and it keeps growing, and the amount of money that they raise is just astronomical, very impressive.
And that was my event in the morning before I went to the Taekwondo in the evening. And done that for ten years now. Never ceases to amaze me when I get on the stage, looking up San Fernando Road, you can't see the street. It's a sea of humanity as far as you can see. And Jay Leno introduced me again, and I'm wearing my USC alumni shirt after SC one Saturday night. He says, Jay says, thanks for dressing for the occasion. And I says, what do I care? We're going to the BCS Bowl. And I got a nice round of applause out of the group. And I said something about, I didn't know the Raiders were black in town. Sea of black out there. It seems like every Harley Davidson writer wears black. Then I cut out the jokes and said, thanks, people, and got the heck off of there, because Jay had a lot more lines to deliver after I got off.
And they were funnier.
Yeah, they were funnier. Somebody wrote them for him, I'm sure. But no, he's pretty good at one-liners. Okay, nothing else? What's next, please?
Next is consent items, five A through five I. Following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before motion is proposed.
Mr. Manukian.
I'd like to pull C and E.
C and E, pull. Is there a motion on the remainder?
So moved.
Okay, roll call.
Council members Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Eusefion.
Hi.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. And have we seen the record?
C is Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services regarding installation of a security system at Pacific Park Community Center in library, spec. number three one eight seven. C one is motion authorizing city manager to enter into contract with Protection and Service Industries LP, an amount of thirty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-four cents, plus a fifteen percent contingency of four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-one cents, for a total of thirty-seven thousand, seventy-nine dollars and ninety-five cents, and rejecting all other bids.
Mr. Manukian.
Yes, in the staff report, it says five firms attended a mandatory pre-bid conference, and only one firm submitted a bid. Is that correct?
Apparently so, yes.
Is there a reason why there was only one firm?
I'll ask Shaheen to come up, the project manager. He was at the meeting.
Okay.
Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Shaheen Begum. I'm the project manager for this project.
Why was, why was there only one bid?
Well, I have no idea why. They didn't submit any bids, so as a one company, we submit a bid.
Okay. And five firms attended the bid conference?
Five firms, yes, sir.
All right, and the bids within the consultant's cost estimate, from what I see?
Yes, they were. Consultancy was thirty-five thousand dollars, and the bid we received was thirty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars.
Okay. Thank you. That's it?
Thank you. Is there a motion on that?
Five C one.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Council members Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. And five E, is it?
Yes.
Director of Community Development and Housing regarding carryover appropriation for Committee for Clean and Beautiful Glendale and Glendale Youth Alliance, Inc., fiscal year two thousand five oh six. Excess revenue for fiscal year two thousand six oh seven budget. E one is resolution of appropriation to provide funds for the two programs.
Mr. Menuchyan.
The amount that is unexpended is not a small amount. It's eighty thousand dollars. Why is it unexpended? And I wanted to shine a little bit more light on what it's being appropriated for.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, actually, if Sam Engel is here, he can address this. One of the issues with both, the issue with both of these funds is we budget in July, and we have to budget for categories where we don't, these are unanticipated. We don't know how much money is going to be raised during the year. And so, for example, with GYA and with the clean account, clean is, and Sam can elaborate on this, they raise funds during the year for the anti-graffiti and all of the beautification events. GYA, it's, we budget how much money we think will be brought in as a result of work that the kids do in the private sector. And in both of these cases, the revenues far exceeded the budgeted amount. So, we use this in, for example, budgeting next year. You know, we try to anticipate, but it's based on experience. And one of the reasons it's so late is it takes finance this long to reconcile all of the accounts we had wanted to go into.
Why are these sums that are raised by the committee, why are they allocated to an undesignated fund balance, as opposed to a specific account that deals with Committee for Clean and Beautiful Glendale? Why is it going into an undesignated fund balance, and now we have to reallocate it? Why shouldn't it go into an automatic Committee for Clean and Beautiful Glendale?
It probably should. I suspect it's taken in as a contribution in the general fund, and when not expended, it just reverts to balances. But it could easily be set up as a separate trust and agency, or a special contributions fund. Probably should, especially with Clean and Beautiful becoming, assuming you're going to authorize them to proceed with their incorporation status.
Well, we did.
Okay. Then that would make sense that this be accounted for in a separate contributions fund. We can have finance do that. My question that I'd had, Mr. Menuchyan, along the same lines as you're asked, was, which was whether or not this is general fund, general revenues, or contributions. And Madeline answered that for me, as she has here this evening, that these are actually contributions that are raised by both of these programs. It shouldn't just revert to general fund balances. They should be.
And that was the question.
They should be treated like ongoing projects, so that they, if money that they raise, but don't spend in one year, they automatically get the next year.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, we'll set it up that way.
That would be achieved with a specific account.
Right, correct.
And I also wanna emphasize that the sum of one-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-three is going for what, again? If we can make the statement in public? So, it's not buried in these reports? Because we talk about youth employment all the time.
Yeah, those funds are used for the hourly wages, to pay the young people who go to work. So, it goes back into the youth employment program.
Right.
We call this our self-sustaining youth employment program. The revenues that they generate through their work are supposed to cover all of their wages and the supervisors, and they don't quite cover everything, but that's what these funds are used for.
Is this in addition to some of the funds that we allocate during the year, from CDBG and other areas as well?
Yes, those funds supplement this program.
Okay.
Right, but in the case of the one-twenty-six, these are actually fees that the youth workers earned, in addition to fundraising activities by Glendale Youth Alliance, right? Or is it just fees alone?
That's correct. These are just the fees.
Just the fees alone. So, in other words, as a standalone program, the youth that go out and do the work in private homes, on the hillsides, and so forth, actually have earned that much money, one-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand.
That's correct. As a matter of fact, and Karina can correct me, maybe Karina could come up here. Karina is the, does the accounting for the GYA program, and she started as a GYA participant.
Well, they come once a year to my hillside. I'll put in a plug immediately. They come once a year to my hillside, and just do an incredible job. It's just amazing how efficient they are.
My name's Karina Gregorian.
And how much do they generate generally on the wages for the youth employment and the self-sustaining?
The entire program.
Just the GYEP?
Well, GYEP and GRE are two programs. They're the two programs that are self-sustaining. And last year, they made about eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars revenue. After all the expenses, the youth wages, this is the fund that was left to carry over.
Eight-hundred thousand? They generated that much?
Yes.
And how many youth, do we know how many youth are being, are working?
Through the two programs, we have over eighty youth at this point in time.
Very good.
Hopefully, we'll be able to employ more youth in the upcoming year.
Very good.
And the homeowner can understand, so that they understand. I mean, everyone is insured, so there's never any problem on someone's property, as opposed to sometimes hiring a private contractor that you really don't know if they have workers' compensation or anything else.
Right.
It's really a great service.
Mr. Ysefian.
Before you sit down, you said the youth generate eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars themselves. I just wanna make sure, is it what they generate themselves, or this is how much money you end up having that includes their own money generation, and also all the other grants that you get?
No.
Because you got over a hundred thousand dollars on GYA from the CDBG.
This is just the revenue generated by the two programs.
Okay, so the revenue generated by the two programs is eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Close to.
And out of that, you have about one-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars left. So, in a way, what you're telling me is, if next year, you do not get any CDBG money, you already have one-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars on top.
Well, we're hoping for the money, because the workload is, it just depends how much work we get next year, and how much our customers are willing to pay.
And what did you generate last year?
I don't have the figure off the top of my head, but I believe, I wanna say about seven-hundred.
Okay, so you have generated more money this year. Probably your wages are gone up too, because minimum wage has gone up, and everything else is gonna go up.
Right, exactly, French benefits.
Is the demand greater than the number of workers available?
At times, in the summer, when it's our peak season. We have a greater amount of work than we have staff.
After the fire department sends out notices?
Exactly. And we have needs for vehicles and other expenses. So, the more we can invest back into the program, the more kids we can employ, because we definitely have the demand for it.
And how many do you employ?
Eighty.
Eighty, in this program. Eighty, eighty-five.
But they could.
We could employ more.
There's more students that want to.
Exactly. We have over seven-hundred students that apply every year that we're not able to serve.
That's for good cause.
If I might add one thing, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a team leader with every group. And so, the funds that they generate with their fees don't quite cover all the wages of the kids, the team leaders, and the administrative, for example, Karina spends full-time just on the invoicing and handling all of that. So, that's where the additional funds through CDBG are allocated to. These funds cover pretty much just the kids' wages.
My understanding was, at one point, GYA was going to separate itself and become a separate entity, a five-oh-one-C-three, and all by itself. Is that what has happened?
They were, and they are, a five-oh-one-C-three. And the fundraising that they do is kept separate. That's not part of the city fund at all.
But is GYA part of the city of Glendale, or it's a separate entity?
It's a separate nonprofit entity.
Okay, and where do they operate out of? Out of city of Glendale, or outside city of Glendale?
The staff that supports the nonprofit are city of Glendale employees, with the exception of, well, actually, I think she's a city of Glendale employee as well. And they contribute, the nonprofit contributes funds toward the operation of the youth programs.
For the staff?
Correct.
And how many staffers do they have?
Well, all of the staff who work on youth employment are staff that support, GYA is like the umbrella nonprofit. They market themselves as GYA. So, it's kind of hard to differentiate. The youth employment program is a city program, and then...
What I wanna know is, like, for example, Carmen used to work for the city at one point. And then, would that position, not necessarily her, would that position still be a city position, or is that a GYA position paid by GYA and French benefits and everything else?
It's a city position. All of the positions are city positions.
Yusefian, would you like this put on the agenda?
No, that's fine. I got my questions answered.
I'll move five E.
Second.
Okay, no more discussion, roll call.
Council members, Menuchyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Thank you. What is next, please?
Next is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
First speaker, Margaret Habib. Margaret Habib. The left. Stephen Hutching, if I got it right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. My name is Steve Hutching. I live at nineteen fifty-nine Glencoe Way. I got about three hours of sleep last night, and I'm not happy about it. This is not the first time this has happened, and this is the result of an ongoing construction project at the intersection of Menlo and Glencoe Way. I and other members of the community have been downtown to see Mr. Zern and other members of the city to try to deal with this problem. It continues. This is a photograph of what rolled up at five-thirty in the morning several weeks ago. The photograph is a little dark. It was at the time. When the sun came up, this is what was there. When it pulled up at five-thirty in the morning, backup horn beep, 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 it woke up the neighborhood. This has happened before. It happened as recently as this morning at one AM. We called the police department, for lack of a better place to call. The first call was, we have a problem, they're doing it again. Can you send someone? We went outside to talk to the people involved. Things escalated. We called again. Perhaps you should send a car. We're beginning to have a problem. When fingers pointed and voices escalated, we called nine-one-one. Shortly after that, four of Glendale's finest cars pulled up, and they dealt with the situation. By that time, the truck had gone, the equipment was parked in the road. Now, I submit to you that Glendale Police Department has a better thing to do than to deal with this. We can use their resources better. They don't need to deal with this. City Hall needs to deal with this. We've been there. We've been there on repeated occasions, and at this point, we're not getting anywhere. When we talk to people, it's not their job. When we talk to other people, it's some other department. When we talk to people, it's call the police. Well, we call the police. It escalated to a nine-one-one call this morning. It shouldn't have to come to that. And I would like, from this council, some clear direction to City Hall. Who is responsible for overseeing and monitoring this problem? Who do we go to? Who has the authority to control it, to deal with it, and to resolve it? Because nothing is happening short of calling the police. And I'm tired of it, and I'd like to get some sleep.
Don't blame you. Mr. Starburg.
Do we, what's that? Steve, is this a public works project? What's going on?
It's a private development, and there's, it's a longstanding issue amongst the owner of the house.
Longstanding, how long? Is somebody building something up there? What's going on?
There's construction activity going on at a private residence. They have permits from both Building and Safety and from Engineering. I have inspectors probably doing, I'd say, triple the amount of work that you would normally have to put in on a project like this. In fact, I have, engineering inspectors go up there every day. We've shut them down, we've called them in, we've reinstated their permit, but things such as, we've asked them to get their equipment off the street, 'cause they don't have a used-to-street permit, they refuse. When that happens, I have no choice but to call the police, and we tell it. So, the police, there is a certain aspect the police will be involved in.
He's delivering equipment at one in the morning.
Absolutely not appropriate. I agree.
Mr. Mayor, let me suggest that...
Let's go listen to Mr. Howard.
Well, I think Mr. Starburg was going to say the same thing I do. I think we can work together, because we can seek information and report, and I can turn my, one of my prosecutors on it. Obviously, inappropriate behavior, and the residents shouldn't have to be the ones constantly dealing with it. Sounds like public works has been trying, but if we need to, we'll put more attention on this, and if we have to act with the bigger club, we'll act with the bigger club.
What I'm, all I'm concerned about, 'cause I hear different times too, you got frustrated calling down. Who weren't they calling to, to get this straightened out to begin with?
We have called Community Services, we have called Engineering, we have called Building and Safety. We've called everybody except a Boy Scout in uniform.
I'm just wondering why you had it on up here tonight, to get the action you should've got, without showing up here.
I'm fed up, and I didn't get any sleep last night, for the third time.
Okay, well, we'll kick it up to my office and coordinate all the department's responses to it.
I mean, these calls that come in, I don't know who on staff is telling them to...
So, the answer is, you called Jim Starburg?
Yes.
I mean, it's obviously, probably more to it than I know.
I'd be happy to.
There's certain times that they're supposed to operate?
There's no question about that.
Seven AM.
Those, and again, absolutely, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, we'll follow up.
What are those times?
Seven AM. Seven AM. They can't be dropping off heavy equipment and parking it in the street and making noise at one o'clock, or two o'clock, or five o'clock.
Equipment they're bringing in.
Not past seven PM.
Druin pessons. Yeah.
Like I say, we'll probably take a bigger club, but we have the club, so.
Unreal. Do us a favor, go home and get a lot of sleep early, and we have your card. We'll take care of it.
Who do I call?
Who?
Well, at one o'clock in the morning, the police department, frankly.
How about the owner?
Well, if we have to, we'll go out there, and we'll cite the individuals. But at one o'clock in the morning, call the police department. I'll talk to the chief, they'll take your call, and they'll respond. But during the day, during office hours, call me.
Will do. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
Hey, we'll put, Steve, can you camp out there tonight?
Do we need any? I have his name and address. I guess you got everything, right? Okay, next speaker is Stephen Dowling. You don't have a similar problem, do you?
Yes, I'm the other neighbor.
Oh, you're the other neighbor.
My name is Stephen Dowling. I live at nineteen sixty Glencoe Way, across the street from the new home.
Is that bad?
Basically, I'm reading what Mr. Hutching had said, and we're just, we've tried talking to the planning department, the engineering department, the traffic department, and the only suggestion they can make is call the police department.
Do you have email?[1675.12]
Pardon me?
Do you have email?
Yes, I do.
Send an email to council members.
Okay.
It'll get done if nothing else.
Well-
I'm sorry, this is unexcusable. I don't mean to point, I think it was staff or anything, but this is unexcusable.
This project itself, I've been keeping a, kind of a log, in a sense, since the project began in January, and it's up to three pages long right now, and the house hasn't even started building yet.
I think you're gonna see a conclusion to your nightmare.
So.
Mr. Starburg?
Yeah, recognizing it sounds like we have a very belligerent contractor here, and so-
Yeah.
If indeed they're ignoring the efforts that we make during the normal hours, and they're still doing it, then the immediate response is do call the police department, and, and the police can come out, they're on duty, they'll cite them, they'll stop them, they'll tell them, and then during the day, we will kick this over to the city attorney's office and take appropriate action against the owner and the contractor.
The contractor of, of, the major contractor is Green Road Construction out of Victorville, I think.
I'm sure we have all that.
And the site manager is a person by the name of Leon Chehonian, and I've commented him numerous times, and he says, I'm really sorry that won't happen again, and a week later, something else happens. So-
We get the picture.
We're just kinda-
I think we got it clear.
The only, the only solution is to maybe pull the permits.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll take action.
Make the owner-
They'll be dealing with it starting tomorrow.
I hope so. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Let me, let me apologize to two individuals for having to come down here this evening.
Yeah, that's, shouldn't have to. That's why I wanted to go home and get a good night's sleep now. Hopefully, it won't happen tonight before we get out there tomorrow. Okay, Robert Sullivan, followed by Gargic Rustamian. You don't have a similar issue, do you?
No.
Good.
And I got a full night's sleep last night.
Good.
And you don't own the property, I hope.
Yeah.
You're not a builder.
Dear Mayor Weaver, we, the undersigned petitioners, wish to take issue with the city's planned demolition and destruction of the Central Park tennis facility. The city has no plans to replace these courts, and several hundred tennis players and patrons of these courts will be displaced, along with several hundred more students. Those of us familiar with the history of this planned demolition from last year also know that no master impact report was ever adopted or published to study the impact that increased traffic, parking, and gridlock would have on the planned new facility. In two thousand and one, the city council based our decision to remove the Central Park courts on the retired assistant parks and recreations manager Scott Reese's, Reese's judgment that fewer people were playing tennis. The tennis courts at Riverdale Park were demolished and not replaced. The USTA has recently had meetings on the subject of tennis courts being demolished and not replaced. At this current rate, tennis will become a sport that only the wealthy can afford in joining private clubs due to a lack of public tennis courts. The city has a responsibility to its residents and voters to provide and maintain adequate and regionally located public recreational facilities, not to demolish them for aesthetics, to placate greedy developers and contractors with indiscriminate urbanization, or to hastily spend block grant funds without regards to the impact of such plans. Besides a senior citizens ladies group headed by Marlene Schmidt and the Filipino Central Park Tennis Club headed by Brian May that has between eighty and one hundred members, there is the Central Park Tennis Academy of Coach Gargic Rustomian. Coach Gago, as he is known to his students in France, has over two hundred students currently. Many are tournament-level players and others are age-division champions. Coach Gago's classes provide valuable and constructive after-school activity for the young people of Glendale, teaching the ethics of sportsmanship and fair play, as well as strong fundamentals for beginning, intermediate, and advanced levels. What will these pre-teen and teenage students do after their tennis courts are demolished? Where will, where will they go once they are displaced? There is a direct correlation between after-school activity and keeping students from engaging in gang or otherwise delinquent, high-risk, or truant activity. Closing these courts will indeed be a serious blow to the Glendale Armenian community, as well as depriving these children of a very positive activity. If the city of Glendale Department of Parks and Recreation really studied the usage of the Central Park tennis courts, they would find that these courts are a potential moneymaker for the city. If the city really wanted to make money, they would raise the reservation tennis court rates to be comparable with the city of Los Angeles, from four fifty an hour to eight dollars an hour. This would be additional revenue for the city and could be put to use in making improvements to the Central Park tennis facility. Instead of demolishing and destroying the courts, the city could add restrooms and a real reservation office. The unused lawn, former bocce ball, lawn bowling area, and the shuffleboard courts next to the tennis courts should be the area that the city builds on instead. In closing, I only wish to say that in twenty-three years of playing tennis at the Central Park facility, Coach Gago is the finest, as well as most beloved, tennis pro and facility manager. I have seen Jack Leach, Johnny Jose, Roberto Maggio, and Robert Kennelarian, all as former pros and facility managers. Coach Gago has lower-income students on scholarship, as well as providing a place for younger tennis pros to assist him on teaching his group classes. To demolish these courts, especially at this time of the holidays with no replacement courts, would be especially egregious not only to the tennis community, but also the Armenian community. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. Copies went to Supervisor Antonovich, Henry Talbert of the USTA, Archer Madoyan, Armenian consul, and Willie Ga, the Philippine consul. And here is a six-page petition along with- And these are the students who will be displaced, who will not have a place to go. I'd also like to forward that to you. And finally, well, I guess my time is up.
Your time's up, just, can you just wrap it real quick?
Sure. Article in Pasadena Star News about how they are building additional courts because tennis is on the rise in the city of Pasadena, and also to let you know that the Southern California Tennis Association, Henry Talbert, is very interested in supporting our effort and will invest income and funds and resources to help either save the courts or in building a replacement facility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Starburg, I know we were trying to put some new courts in other locations, does anybody know where we're at or on doing that?
Well, I'm trying to recall offhand, Fremont Park is one of the primary spots. As you know, we've done quite a bit of work with the school district on Glendale High School, and we thought that was going to be an opportunity to light some existing courts, as well as construct new courts. We've run into difficulties as we communicated to you a number of months ago with the construction of new courts, because the district wanted to have essentially first priority for their use. That would likely have not made them as available to the public as we desired, so we're back looking at Fremont Park again as a good alternative for that. And unless the public get the impression that these tennis courts are leaving because of private development coming into the community, as you know, you've wrestled with balancing the interest between an adult recreation center, and I will say, there are probably hundreds, if not thousands, of seniors that have been waiting a long, long time for upgraded senior facilities. So you have been balancing the interests of seniors and the expansion and updating of the adult recreation center with the tennis courts in this location, and you've spent many, many meetings, and I know a great deal of anguish trying to balance those interests, and at the end of the day, decided to move forward with the A R C. That doesn't mean that the interest and desire to find replacement courts for these has been taken off the table, it hasn't, we know it's still a high priority of yours.
My problem is, we're taking these courts out in December, when would there be new courts? I can see six months, a year down the line.
Oh, easy.
And what happens to all these tennis players?
We don't know. You, you discussed that issue during your capital improvement program last year, and you directed us to find sites, but at this point, we don't have a site and we don't have funding to replace the courts. And we knew that when we made the decision about the A R C.
Just so public knows, I voted against the proposed adult recreation center design, because it could have been dual-use with tennis courts on the roof. Could have put four to six on there, and was determined that tennis wasn't that popular, and the design was wrong. So, I don't know, I just see tennis, a lot of tennis players in this town having no place to go for probably a year, two years. It's, it's not a hot topic item in this town, I guess. Other, other sports are. It's, it's a shame. Sit here and as a councilman, I can't do anything, all of us collectively can't do anything to provide those courts in a timely manner. And we've known these are gonna come down for more than a year, and here we are. We're not even to first base identifying a site yet. Mr. Manukian?
Just, just for the record, during all of our deliberations, I brought up the issue about the number of kids that were being served over there and, and this, destroying or removing the tennis courts. And I even went and let them know, I met with the coach, and I told him, this is what they're planning on doing, but there was no response from them either, so. At this point, I don't know what can be done and how far down we are on, on the building, but, you know, I, all I can say is, I told you so.
Well, as long as we're getting into I told you so's, even more reason that we should have built that adult center on Bran Boulevard, that would have left us plenty of room there at the Central Park to, to not only do tennis courts, but also have more green space, so.
I think I-
Mr. Yusefian, let me-
I just think, we, we gotta tell staff to come back with some alternative sites and consider it in the budget, trying to get it in as soon as we can. I mean, tennis isn't going away. Anybody that watches television, tennis is a very popular sport worldwide, we all know that. And we haven't done anything.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we have and we are. You did discuss it during the C I P.
Yes.
We were pursuing a project at the high school, and, and you all were informed of how that fell apart.
Oh, yes.
We will us, we will us-
Very well. But there's gotta be other sites in this city. I think we have to take action.
Well, you'll have the opportunity in about five months when we take up the C I P again for next year, and I would imagine Mr. Howard's getting a little, getting a little nervous about the extent of the discussion on this topic on an agendized item.
Frankly, I'm upset, that's why I'm speaking out. I've waited too long to see action on this. City government just rolls along sometimes and nothing happens. Mr. Mjarian?
At the risk of Mr. Howard getting very angry, I just was hoping that we were gonna get better cooperation from the school district. It was my, it was my intention that when we removed those tennis courts from the, what's gonna be the adult recreation center, that we would be able to strike an agreement with the school district to open up those courts and light those courts at Glendale High School. And I'm very disappointed that we're unable to reach an agreement with them in light of the many cooperative efforts that we have with them, many of them not always benefiting the city, but-
Yep, they went too cooperative.
I'll leave my remarks at that.
Now, the next speaker is that-
Wait, wait. Let me, let me, this is just history, I just wanna let people know about the history. We were here before, and if some of the audience remember this, and we were all here and we remember, that this conversation took place about a year ago, a little bit more than a year. And, and at the time, the county wanted us, if you remember, they said, you're gonna lose your funding, you gotta show what you need to do, and the staff came and said, in order to do that, we have to demo all these places, and they gotta take all those tennis courts out. And what we did is, we said, is there any way we could keep the tennis courts, so we don't have to demo them until we are ready to build a facility? Staff came back, county bought on that, and we came back and we said, okay, we're not going to do this, we're gonna keep the tennis courts in here until we're ready to demo, because we're ready to construct. So that's what we were able to do, I'm just basically recanting what history was, and we did that. This is not something that happened overnight. We've been talking about adult recreation for twelve years, God, twelve years. That's about seven years before I came in, and how many years before, two years before Mr. Weaver came to city council, and, and so many other, so it's not a new thing, not a new concept, it's just been going on for long, and there was a lot of discussion about this. And we were, we were also told that we were going to work with the school district, it didn't work out, so I guess they're gonna come to, back to us. Just history.
Let me, Mr. Mayor, if I can, let me suggest, we'll bring you an update report on the status of the replacement courts, and we won't wait for the budget process. If you wanna give us direction different than what you did the last C I P, we'll be happy to take that.
Well, at least if we get the information, get a head start, when it comes to the budget, we'll at least be aware of the, the nature of it, what possibilities are out there, and whether it makes sense to us to make it a high priority in the budget to do. I don't wanna start in the budget hearings in April, May, and then we adopt the budget in July, and then we go forth, and we're just pushing it further down the line, in my view. And I have no idea what those clubs are gonna do, they're just gonna simply fade away. That's, that is a, that's a crime. We've produced a lot of great tennis players out of this city, and now the consul general of the Philippines used to play there too. He came from Clearover in West L.A. to play here every Sunday, so. Any rate, yeah, is the next speaker gonna be the coach? Go, Coach Gogo? Goga?
Goggy.
Goggy.
He apologizes, but he's, he's like to present, yeah, his remarks in Armenian, I will translate.
He's grateful for this time, for you guys, for the council to hear him out, particularly how last time at the, at the eleventh hour, the council came in and helped preserve the courts for, albeit a short period of time, for the players. He doesn't wanna repeat what was said about the children being deprived of the tennis courts, he doesn't wanna repeat that, but he said, we do have a lot of players and we can have them come to council so you could see the faces of these children who will be deprived. On behalf of the children, I'm simply asking just for a location where the children can go and play, that, that is all I'm asking. He says, I'm not asking for myself, I can find work for myself very easily. I'm asking for the children, someplace that's convenient and that's safe for them to go and play tennis. The day they, the children received the news that they were tearing down their courts, it was as though someone had handed them down the news that their own home was going to be destroyed, and now they look on the day of the destruction of those courts as an imminent destruction of their own homes. Essentially says that there's a shortage of courts, and wherever this group with this amount of players and youth goes, it will be, it'll add a pressure to the, to the existing courts. It would cause an inconvenience to go to another court if they were to go and try and find a location that already exists and bring all the players there. He said that, you know, I have a lot of friends who want to come and move to Glendale and build homes here, but, you know, one of the things that are issues here in Glendale is the cutting of, a down of trees that prevents people from developing. If a tree is even as thick as just my arm, the city doesn't allow them to cut it. Well, now the city's prepared to cut down an entire forest of children, basically by depriving them of these courts. So there's also a Filipino tennis club that comes and frequents that location, and there's adults that frequent it. Says, they will find places, I will find a place to go and to continue to teach tennis, but within ten days of those courts being torn down, those children, some of them may never come back. I implore you, please help us find a solution to this.
Thank you.
There's one site, I think some of you guys might remember, I don't know what happened with it, and we're at the sports complex dedicating the, the new Estater Field, there's a mound up behind.
No, I didn't say no, I said, it's called the Knoll, he's referring to the Knoll.
If that were, if that were leveled off and taken down.
Used to hearing that from me.
I don't know-
Because we asked, and he told us, it can't be done.
I don't know how many courts could go there, but, and I suggest maybe we look at that too.
We will bring you a full report on this.
Yeah, and in the report, another thing that comes to mind is, we never did establish what type of financial, I mean, there are different coaching situations, and I don't think we ever got a direct answer on, on how that works, because-
Actually, you did have a report from Mr. Chapchan at one point on the nature of the, of the contracts that are at play, and the, and the recommendation that at some point, we go out and request proposals again on those, because they've gotten terribly out of date in terms of fees and the less-
Right, that's as far as it went. We got the report, but we never had a solution to how we're gonna go about doing this.
Well, I guess we'll be getting a report back on it. Okay, next speaker, Jim Stewart. Okay, next speaker, Jim Stewart.
I have some copies of a letter. I'm representing the Sierra Club of Los Angeles and Orange Counties with 50,000 members. And we have 1,000 members here in Glendale. And we are extremely concerned about the issue of your use of coal and IPP and the contract extension. And I do have this chart, which all of you who have seen the movie with Al Gore is, here's the, thank you very much. Here's the level of carbon dioxide for the last 1,000 years, and it actually goes back millions of years, until we started burning coal in the 1800s, and then we started burning gas and oil, and then you can see what's happened. It's off the chart. We are in a crisis. You all know about global warming. The issue is, how can we stop it? Unfortunately, California has taken the leadership in this. California has passed AB 32. California has passed 1368. And this means that it's time now for us to stop the use of coal. Because the only way we can take care of that chart and get it to stop going up is by stopping burning coal and starting to use renewable energies, solar, wind, geothermal, biomass. And, you know, if we have to, we could burn, as you have here in Glendale, a modern IGC, you know, the most modern kinds of gas plants. Coal produces three times as much CO2 per kilowatt hour as does a modern gas plant, and of course, an infinite number of times if we used wind and solar. So we, the Sierra Club, and all the environmentalists really of this whole county are calling upon you to go along with the lead that has been set by Los Angeles. Los Angeles has said they're not extending their IPP contract beyond its expiration date of 2027. Glendale has this wonderful reputation as an environmentally conscious city. I implore you, in the name of the future generations of this planet, please do not, do not extend that contract. And I'll be glad to meet with your utility staff and other members of the city council to discuss this because the price, they say they may save a couple of cents per kilowatt hour if they use coal instead of wind power. Well, the future generations will look back and say, "You flooded Florida and New Orleans and all that to save a couple of cents a kilowatt hour? You made the whole planet so hot that we were like in that July heat wave constantly, forever? I don't think you want that on your conscience. I know I don't, and that's why I'm here." Any questions or anything?
We'll be on the agenda in a few weeks.
Yeah, I'll be back.
I understand that that provides approximately 20%, 25% of all the power in this city. Is it 39%? According to the report, it was that. Well, somewhere between 25 and 39. If we don't have that, where's the alternatives?
Listen, if we're going to start the discussion, then I want to put in my two cents.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Cataro. I'm off the mark. I'm sorry. Okay, there's three speakers next, all on LEED. Michael Beck, Monica Marquez, Martin Schleg, whatever, I don't know how you're going to do this together, or... Are you together, going to speak together as one group?
If you please, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to have timing separately.
So five minutes, 15 minutes on LEED?
I'll be short.
Okay, your name for the record.
My name is Monica Marquez, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of Glendale Burbank. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages the participation of citizens in government. The League never supports or opposes political parties or candidates, but the League studies issues of importance to its members, and once a consensus is reached, may lobby in favor of those positions. The League of Women Voters of Glendale Burbank strongly supports sustainable building practices, and it is on that topic that I am here to talk to you tonight. First, I'd like to thank the city council for supporting LEED silver and gold level buildings for the downtown Glendale specific plan. For those who may not already know, LEED stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. It is a rating system developed by the U.S. Green Building Council, a nonprofit organization dedicated to transforming the building marketplace to sustainability. The LEED certification system guarantees that a building meets certain minimum environmental standards in each of five different areas: sustainable sites, water efficiency, energy and atmosphere, materials and resources, and indoor environmental quality. One example, oh, a building may be certified at one of four different levels: basic certification, the silver level, the gold level, or the highest of all, the platinum level. One example of a platinum level building is the Bank of America Tower currently being built in downtown Manhattan. This tower will be the first high-rise to strive for LEED platinum designation. To be constructed largely of recycled and recyclable building materials, the building will feature filtered underfloor displacement air ventilations, double-wall technology, and translucent insulating glass in floor-to-ceiling windows for maximum light. It is expected that putting in place these features will add 2% to the building's $1.3 billion projected cost, but the long-term gains in energy and water savings will outweigh that additional upfront cost. Manhattan is far away from Glendale, but the goals are the same: to build environmentally sustainable buildings that fit our city and our culture. That is why we are requesting the city council directed staff to develop recommendations for a more comprehensive approach to city projects and for creating a program that would encourage and assist private sector developers to use LEED guidelines for new construction and remodels. Thank you for your consideration and for your attention.
Thank you. And who's next? Michael or Martin?
I'm Martin Schlagader. Thank you. No, it's fine. That's why I go by Martin. I work at the Coalition for Clean Air, and I'm a neighbor of yours living here in Glendale. I'm living in Eagle Rock. I'm a neighbor of Glendale. And I can tell by the thoroughness of your discussion earlier on all these items, as I've watched your council tonight, that you're interested in getting the most out of your public dollars, that you're interested in getting the most out of your public investment. And we believe that sustainable building practices are a means to that end. We believe that public buildings should be as productive, as healthful, as efficient as possible. And the problem is that without having set those goals and without having set some standards up front, oftentimes, cutting corners or just construction as is commonly done will make a building not as efficient as possible, and therefore, over time, you lose opportunity to save money. It'll use materials that can produce unhealthful air quality, and that can result in less productivity of city staff, of the building occupants, folks spending more time sick at home than necessary, and in fact, increased health costs. And it can waste natural resources and put a burden on landfills. We know that 20% to 30% of our waste stream is construction waste, and so we can cut, trim that by getting into some standards that'll make your building practices more sustainable. The LEED system that Monica was talking about is a great system because it allows you to not have to, as a city, bicker over the details. It sets some goals. It gives you a menu of options. And then you can have, as that gets certified as a green building, you know that that's a program that has national recognition. It's accepted by environmental organizations. You know that people aren't going to come back and say, "Well, you know, did you need another solar panel, or should you have used a different flooring?" You won't have to bicker over the details, and your staff won't have to immerse themselves and be burdened by those details, but rather, you'll have confidence that a third-party system and a recognized national standard is being used to give you the mantle of saying, "Our buildings are sustainable. They're saving money. They're saving energy, and that's the kind of Glendale I know you want to be." So I believe that now's a good time with bonds, that bond funding now available, that you guys are going to be pursuing and need to put up construction of recreation facilities and whatnot. Now's a good time to set some standards for Glendale. I encourage you to do that for city buildings, and I encourage you to find a way to encourage that in private development. Glendale Community College District, as you know, has adopted these standards and I think are finding some success with them in their construction program. Pasadena has a similar standard that they've set for their city buildings, and Burbank is expediting permits for private development that meet these standards. So there's models out there for you and your staff to tap into, and I think this is a very reliable way and one that's respected, again, locally but nationally as well, to give you tools to save money over time, to cut down on energy consumption, which will help resolve the matter of alternatives to coal production which you were seeking earlier. So I encourage you to look into this, and I appreciate your time very much. With that, you will be able to have more healthy, more productive construction of facilities here for your workers and for the neighbors, and I think you'll really get the best out of your investment here, the best out of the public dollar. Thank you. I'm going to distribute here some letters and an article on this item that you can take with you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Michael Beck, followed by Albert Hoffman.
Good evening. I'm Michael Beck. I've been a Glendale resident and homeowner for over 21 years, so longest I've ever lived in one city, and I'm proud of it. I'm also conservation chair of the Verdugo Hills Group of the Sierra Club. And so on that behalf, I represent the almost 1,000 Glendale residents who are Sierra Club members. And I'm here also to urge that you adopt, well, basically it would be, direct staff to study how to implement in city buildings the LEED standards. Again, leadership in energy and environmental design. As an environmentalist, I'm interested in the energy and the environment. However, as a resident of Glendale, I'm interested in leadership, that we be a leader. And quite frankly, I'm a little embarrassed that Pasadena and Burbank seem all right to be a bit ahead of us on this. So that's what our group meant about last month. We unanimously voted the leadership of the Verdugo Hills Group to ask the city council to direct staff to study implementing the LEED standards. And the need is really urgent. I understand that there was a city council study group that looked at Shoal Canyon, and, you know, it's filling up, the, what they call those sanitary landfills. And one of the things about LEED standards is Martin just mentioned, that they're heavy into recycling building materials rather than just shipping them to the dump. They may cost more upfront, these standards, but, you know, you'll save money. City buildings, long-term, you'll save money. And, you know, you were talking budget, you were talking tennis courts, you always want to save money. And you don't do it short-term, you do it long-term. And another reason that you save money is just the price of energy. If you assume that the prices of energy stay stable, you will save money, but they're not going to be. We all know that energy costs are going to rise dramatically. And this brings me to the most important reason to adopt them. Now, I know that we just had another Jim Stewart here talking on behalf of the Sierra Club on these coal power plant things, and this is about the LEED standards, which is a separate issue, but there's a relationship, and it's through global warming. When Time Magazine cover proclaims, "Global warming, be worried, be very worried," when Scientific American and virtually the entire community of atmospheric scientists say that the debate is over, in fact, global warming seems worse than we thought it was, when the British government calls this the biggest threat to the global economy, says the Great Depression, when Governor Schwarzenegger, Republican Governor Schwarzenegger, signs the nation's most aggressive CO2 reduction bill mandating 25% cuts, I heard 37% is what we get from coal in this city, that those cuts are already being mandated. It's time for government and citizens, especially, this is a forward-looking city. I've really been proud to live here because of that, to start noticing. So the Sierra Club has gotten so alarmed at global warming that the national leadership has adopted something called smart energy solutions, not just as top priority, but as its highest priority ever in its 114-year history. And this is unprecedented, but that's how serious the problem is. Number one goal of this policy, what's that? Energy, conservation, and efficiency at the local level. What we are requesting this evening is part of Ground Zero, the Sierra Club's national top priority policy. These standards, LEED standards, are a smart investment, reducing future energy demand in accordance with state laws that's just been passed. And I understand in terms of these renewing coal, burning coal-burning energy contracts, these are going to get unpopular and more unpopular as time passes, and they may look cheap now, but they aren't going to stay cheap. So these standards will help obviate the need for renewing such dirty contracts. These incentives are exactly the kind of thing that will attract forward-looking clean businesses to this city, and I know that's the kind of thing you're looking for. I live on Adams Hill. I've watched city investment at Adams Square Commercial Zone turn a decaying area into a vibrant center in just one decade. It's already paying for itself in land values, tax income and stuff.
Sir, can you wrap it up? Your time is up.
Thank you. I'm saying adopting the LEED standards will do the same thing on a much grander scale.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to put this discussion on the agenda and have the staff either contact the Sierra Club or whoever needs to be contacted so that we can begin the discussion.
Mr. Najarian?
Mr. Yasefian? I'm sure the group already realizes Nancy Kent was before us while we were adopting some of the specifics for our downtown specific plan. And in fact, with regard to private industry, we did give bonuses to the private developers for having their buildings certified as gold or silver under the LEEDs, and actually we went to platinum as well. So in that regard, it is in the forefront of our minds, and certainly, to the extent we can give incentives to the developers, we are encouraging them to do that. It's just a little bit of foresight and engineering and creativity when you're designing the buildings that isn't necessarily a huge cost item. So thank you for bringing it up to us again.
Mr. Yasefian?
And to Mr. Zern, I want to ask, didn't we adopt some kind of an ordinance that dealt with construction debris?
Yes, we did.
They have to set a certain amount of deposit with us, and they have to recycle that, or they won't get their deposit back?
That is correct.
And it's pretty sizable deposit?
It's a pretty sizable deposit, and I'm happy to say that in almost a year of that being in place, we have recycled approximately 6,000 tons, which is about 5% of our total recycled waste cycle. So that's pretty impressive. That's almost as much as our curbside recycling.
And my suggestion to the public is, before they come and think that we are not doing anything, take a ride to our dump, or any dump, as a matter of fact. Well, I mean...
You mean our sanitary landfill?
Sanitary landfill, or any landfill, whether sanitary and sanitary. But the bottom line is, you can't go to any of them in Southern California within driving distance. I haven't gone all the way to Sunset Canyon or whatever that is. But anyone that I go to, Sunshine, I mean, any one of them I go to, they make me separate my wood from my plaster, from my concrete, and you dump them in different places, and that's what you do.
Okay.
It's nothing new.
Without going too far into it to get slapped by a fellow... Without going too far into it to get slapped by a fellow colleague or the city attorney, let's move on with Albert Hoffman, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Thanks.
Yeah, Sunshine.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, council members and staff. Albert Hoffman, resident of Glendale. I actually came down with Stephen Dowling and the other Stephen, I forgot his name, about the construction up on Menlo Drive. And I get a lot of calls from that, being the past president of Mountain City Park homeowners. People complain, and I'll tell you, that contractor up there and the people associated with it are the most belligerent people I've ever run into. One lady called me one day, said, "They're cutting down all the trees up here." Well, I went up, and they completely denuded the whole hillside. I'm not sure why they did that. Or you live up there...
Is this the one up on the hill that you've been before us?
Yeah, it's on the hill, right. And you see it from all over, and I have no idea why they took all the scrub oak and everything out. It was not necessary, but they did. And when I went up to confront them, the, I guess he was the onsite manager, whatever, he said, "Well, if I like open space and beauty like that, I should move to Montana." That was his result. He says, "You people shouldn't expect to keep all these bushes and trees here." Now, they are putting in the wall. I've heard a lot of noise and the complaints. What they said is just unbelievable. Stephen came by today and told me what had happened last night, and it's an ongoing thing. I don't know if you know Dorothy Powell, she's the resident person down in the corner. She calls me all the time, let me know what's going on over there. And I guess the police do get called a lot up there. So there's something really wrong with that project and its management. And I hope that, I guess, they're taking action on that. And that's all I had to say. And I'd like to say something about this coal generating thing that's been come up. I remember a friend of mine worked for City of Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, and it was my understanding that they were getting this power from, I think, in Utah.
Mm-hmm.
And it's very clean coal burning, some new soft coal thing.
No, it's really not. It's really not.
Pardon? It's not? Okay, well, that's what I had heard, that they advertised that it was cleaner burning than the previous coal.
Well, that's his opinion now, but before, when we went and visited the site, it was a different opinion.
Oh, okay. Well, anyhow, so I guess that's something that needs to be investigated, how dirty is it really? And, you know, if it's really bad, I guess we should look into it.
It's coming to council shortly.
Okay, all right. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret Hammond, followed by Herbert Mulano.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and staff. You know, my name is Margaret Hammond. Sometimes we think that battles are just winning or losing for an individual, and that is not necessarily so, or a group that are putting up a battle. It's when the city benefits from them standing up for the rights of all citizens, not just their feeling that they have a right to fight for this, or whatever, if it benefits the whole city. For instance, the Glendale Historical Society. I have been a member since the beginning, the inception. It started with the Doctor's House and went on to several other projects. The Alex Theater would not have been saved without, I was a member of the group that wrote the original paper, Saving the Alex, to save the Alex Theater. What I'm saying is, there are many things that, at the time, it looks like you're fighting against the city, but really, you're asking for something that will benefit the whole city in the long run. Whether, I mean, I know it does cost the city a lot of money regarding the Alex, but without it, we would have lost something that could never be replaced. The Doctor's House, the Adobes, so many things would have been gone that the schoolchildren and the residents of Glendale would have lost. So, well, sometimes people feel, "Well, it's, oh, well, you won a battle on that." Well, it isn't just necessarily that I win a battle, or a group wins a battle. It's a battle for what would be good for Glendale. Now, I have something to say about the tennis courts. You know, no battle was put up when they knocked down or tore up the newest tennis courts in Glendale that were down on, I guess, Riverdale and Pacific. The newest, best, beautiful Olympic pool was taken out without any thought of that this was part of the park that belonged to the city. And what was it replaced with? Cement. Cement. Horrendous. And the school, frankly, I went in when I was reading for some schoolchildren, for a group that I belong to, that I like to go and I read books to, and I was horrified. I mean, it was like I was in a reformatory. The colors were simply horrible, gray and dark green, the hallways. I was, like, completely boggled over it. And as a matter of fact, the linoleum up on the second floor, I think it's of Building Seven, or whatever, I couldn't even find my way around, is all buckling. And it's like gray stuff, and I thought, hmm, there we are. I don't know how much that linoleum costs, but it needs to have someone looking at it because it's all wavy. But the whole point of the matter is, I thought that when the city went into this partnership with the school district, that we were to get the old Edison School. What has happened to that? What has happened to that agreement? Why couldn't that old Edison School be turned into a facility for a swimming pool and for tennis courts and for whatever? If you don't want to put it near the Pacific, why couldn't that be used? Was that not part of the agreement? I heard it was, from somebody in the know, that that old Edison School. And what is it? It's a prep school of some kind? Has it been turned over to a private, to a private school to run? And why? Why? If that property should belong to the city of Glendale. It's very valuable. It's right where you need a pool. It's right where you need tennis courts, since you tore them out. I mean, does nobody stand up for the rights of the people south of Glendale? We're dense as population. We need to have some things like, and in that area particularly. They don't have swimming pools. In my area up in Adams Hill, yeah, people have swimming pools. I can see 10 of them off my deck. But not the people down in that area. In the hot days of July and August, they sure could have used a swimming pool down there. Would have been very nice. And of course, as you say about the tennis courts, they tore up, they were beautiful tennis courts. They were the newest ones that had been put in, and that pool, too. Never could understand, where did the pool go? Why? So I am saying again, come on, think about what's right for the city of Glendale, for the residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Starbuck, I have a question. What was the deal on that? Were we supposed to get that land?
The short answer is no. The deal was not that the school would be turned over. Originally, that was the concept. When the site was expanded to increase it so there could be more park area and move it to the north, then the district had to put in considerably more resources. As a result, the agreement that was approved was the district could keep the old school. And I just want to make a note, as Margaret's running through all the facilities that were taken out, let's talk about the facilities that were put in: health center, recreation center, library, classrooms, K-12 school, computer access. So once again, and baseball field, soccer facilities, and a youth totlot. So again, a balance...
Community center?
Yeah, well, the whole community center. You know, gymnasium. So this balancing of interests, yes, on one hand, the cost was a pool, and I don't think it was a state-of-the-art Olympic pool, and tennis courts, but you have a state-of-the-art facility that meets a number of other needs in the community, and as you will recall, was actively supported by the residents' group in that area, actively supported. So, you know, once again, you can't always meet all of the needs, but it's not as if the city gave direction to tear out the facilities and in effect then leave a barren piece of ground. There is a beautiful facility there now that is used widely by the community and meets lots of needs. So, at the end of the day, when the agreement was finally approved, the site was expanded, the district put in, I think in the neighborhood, an additional $10 million for the expansion. Because we had more green space than the original design, the district was able then to keep the Edison School for their continued use. That was one of the reasons why they were willing to invest in the expansion. And in effect, we got the green space that was part of the original deal over on the Pacific side.
Mr. Najarian?
I'd like to get, Mr. Starbuck, some sort of report, if you could, on the status of our joint projects with the school district. I, as an example, I have the idea that the school district should be opening up those Glendale High School tennis courts, because perhaps the balance of equities is a little bit heavier in the school district's favor than with the city, if you look at the past projects we've done. Something I had understood was more along the lines of what Margaret had stated, that the city was going to get the other side, and we were going to help them develop the joint use, the school and the library and all that. And maybe I'm wrong in that, and I shouldn't, maybe I should have the facts straight before I feel that the Glendale High School tennis court should be opened to replace some missing facilities. So I know there's several other joint-use projects that we have. We've got the one right there on Brand, Cerritos, a balance sheet, if you will. I don't want a detail drawn out down to the dollar figure, but I may be mistaken in my beliefs. I'd like perhaps a report that would set me straight and get me going in the right direction, so I'm not unfairly placing a burden on the school district when I think of solutions to problems that face the community.
Okay, thank you. Herbert Mulano, and already you took a card for me.
Did I?
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Herbert Mulano, city staff. Last week, this city council approved the downtown specific plan. This plan gives a green light to high-rise condominiums. It fails to address the current traffic congestion, and it fails to address the need for developed parkland south of the 134 freeway. In this process, the city council ignored a document that was prepared at great cost and at great participation by prior council members and members of the community, the Greater Downtown Specific Plan.
Strategic Plan.
The Strategic Plan, and the vision that it documents, or it documented for the city of Glendale. The statements made by Mr. Najarian, and I don't often call on Mr. Starbuck or call him to task, but he did volunteer to bring up additional issues concerning the vision statement, that this vision statement is just a vision to be tossed away. It's just a vision. And so I figured that maybe we need some instruction on what the experts say about the vision statement. I got the balance scorecard here for government. It is used by private industry. The top 500 Fortune 1000 companies use it. So I'd like to read an excerpt from this book as to what is a vision. "Vision translates mission into a truly meaningful intended results and guides the allocation of time, energy, and resources." The author says, "In my experience, it is only through a compelling vision that a deep sense of purpose comes alive." And there's another definition here in the index. "This statement should not be abstract. It should contain as concrete a picture of the desired state as possible and provide the basis for formulating strategies and objectives." So, that's what this document did. And I'll state now from this document. "The key to measure these proposed changes," meaning in the greater downtown area, "against the original vision, is to measure these proposed changes. Are we still achieving the same goals and the same vision, would an alternative be of equal or greater benefit to the community?" It goes on to explain what the Greater Downtown Specific Plan does, but it always has a roadmap, and the roadmap is measurable. And all of the topics that you see here today, from Margaret Hammond's statements concerning the parks and the swimming pool, to the other presentations having to do with environmentally friendly buildings, all of those should not be coming to council in an ad hoc fashion, for a council to figure, "Okay, let's take that subject now." It shouldn't be. It's the thing that I've been talking to you for the past four and a half years. You create an encompassing vision for the city, and then you define a strategy for which to accomplish it. And that's why the issues with the tennis courts also came up. All of a sudden, you find that the public doesn't know what the vision is, because you never got elected with a vision statement. None of you did. None. I never heard one. And that's the problem, because without a vision statement, we cannot have a defining strategy. If we had had a proper vision statement, we would know what the, how the city will address parkland in the future. We'd have had statements that tells us exactly where we are this year and the following year. You know, let's take a look at the issue with regard to the tennis courts. If you look at the city of Burbank, the city council in Burbank and the school district in Burbank got together, and I watched that about two weeks ago, and I looked at the difference between that organization and these two organizations in Glendale. And the city councilman in that meeting said, "For every $1 that you put in, we'll put in three. It's a cooperative environment." Well, the city of Glendale lent a million dollars for the turf building in Glendale High. Why not use that million dollars as leverage to get us a good, you know, set of tennis courts, and basically give that million dollars to the school district? The Environmental Planning Board, Mr. Howard, Mr. Zern, and Ms. Wilkerson, sitting as the Environmental Planning Board, made a decision that no environmental impact report was needed for Central Park. Three staff members made a decision of significant impact for the city of Glendale, and they say, "No environmental impact report is needed." So, who are we, the public, going to challenge that, and how are we going to do it? Again, the only choices that we have is to hire an attorney and challenge, because apparently, the voice of the residents are really not heard first, and we don't have a vision statement clearly stated by each of you, and we don't have an encompassing strategic plan for the whole city. Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Starbuck?
Can I borrow your copy of the strategic plan for a second? I don't carry mine with me, but I do have several copies of it. And I don't think I gave it the flippant disregard that Mr. Mulano describes, with all due respect to Herbert. What I was trying to convey is actually a passage from the strategic plan. Let me see if I can find it here. Bear with me for a second. It's actually on one of the pages that Herbert noted, page seven, and the heading is, "The Glendale Downtown Strategic Plan Sets For a Series of Public Actions and Private Opportunities." It says, "We, the writers, have taken care to remain true to the strategic nature of the initial plan done by Alex Cooper. Accordingly, it is not a master plan or even a specific plan. It continues to paint a vision while calling for particular projects. It even suggests sites for these projects, and yet, the concept of flexibility is fundamental to the approach. As the plans for implementation go forward, there will may be the need to make many numbers of changes. The key is to measure these proposed," and Herbert's noted this passage, "the key is to measure these proposed changes against the original vision. Are we still achieving the same goals and the same vision? Would an alternative be of equal or greater benefit to the community?" And as I have submitted, as this document first was, criticized by many people when I got here eight years ago, as not representing the community's input on what the downtown should be, and then became the document that was embraced by those who said the Americana was not consistent with it, and I'll be happy to discuss with Herbert further. This plan, I submit, is very consistent with both the Americana, with the planning you have done in the DSP, with the efforts that you have made in terms of hitting the strategies that are described in the downtown strategic plan, from housing to open space to the development of a mobility plan, are all very consistent with the various components of the strategic plan, and indeed, that is a vision. And as I noted last week, and Herbert took issue with, that vision is noted in the document, needs to be flexible, needs to be adaptive, and what you should be doing is constantly going back and checking where you are and where you're going against that strategy. And I think you've done that throughout the course of the DSP, one person's view.
Thank you.
Mayor, thank you for the indulgence.
And I disagree with that view. I don't think that strategic plan and what we wound up getting at the town center is even faintly remotely.
Well, let's not get into more discussion on this one either.
I would like to add, if I may, for one minute, Mr. Weaver.
We're not supposed to get into debate, Mr. Mulano, on this.
It's not a debate. It's just a clarification of something that is critical. A strategic plan measures our weaknesses... A Strategic Plan measures our weaknesses and our strengths, and the weaknesses that we have had documented was developed open space. Thank you.
Welcome. What is next, please?
Seven is adoption of ordinances. Seven A is ordinance adding a provision to the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 regarding authority of the city manager to execute indemnity agreements for certain city contracts. This was offered November 7th, 2006, by Councilmember Yusefian.
Mr. Yusefian?
Move seven A.
Second. Move seconded. Roll call.
Councilmembers Menuchaan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
And Mayor Weaver?
Aye. What is next, please?
Eight is action items. At eight A, a city manager regarding gratification of 2% public education and government-peg cable access fee. At eight A one is ordinance for introduction.
Assistant Ordinance for introduction. Mr. Yusefian?
Mayor, I would like to introduce the ordinance as revised by the city attorney.
Thank you. Ordinance has been introduced. What is next, please?
At eight B is Director of Public Works regarding Shoal Canyon landfill expansion environmental impact study. Eight B one is motion authorizing Public Works Department to work in conjunction with the Los Angeles County Sanitation Districts to prepare an EIR for the expansion of Shoal Canyon landfill. At eight B two is resolution of appropriation to provide funds for the expansion environmental impact study.
Thank you. We have been briefed a lot. Mr.?
I'd like to move eight B one and two.
Do one. We have a card on B.
Two?
Oh, wait. We have a card in eight B. Both one and two. Okay, you can move one and two. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we do have a card. Mr. Milano? Right, two minutes. If you need more, let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver, members of the City Council. My name is Herbert Milano. I'd like to bring the issue of the landfill with regard to the concept of a Strategic Plan, and with regard to getting the type of reports to the public that are, that is relevant. If you had a Strategic Plan, you would be informing the public as to the state of the city. If you had an encompassing Strategic Plan, you would get key information, top-level management information concerning the performance of various departments. For example, in Mr. Zern's department, we would know how many additional miles of roadway we plan to build in the next five to 10 years. We would get from Mr. Zern information on the status of our sewer system. We would get from Mr. Zern a status of the life remaining in our landfill. And that is absolutely crucial, because if we are going to bring in 10,000 more residents in the next few years, we need to know what that impact is on the landfill. It is a question that I posed in one of the sessions during the Downtown Specific Plan, and it wasn't answered. We need to know every year where we are, because it's one of the most crucial things, and one of our constraints that we have in the city is one of the weaknesses. So, as we look at various different states of our city with regard to roadway, or population, or population increases, or the use of electricity, or the capacity of our landfill, these things should not be happening when we only have 12 years left, or 10 years left, for us to take action. These are long-term planning issues that should be addressed and disclosed to the public, and that's what a Strategic Plan does. It communicates to the public our current state of affairs. It should not be a surprise to us, because I should be able to go into the website and find all that information, and we don't have that. I wish we could change.
Thank you. We are briefed every year on the status of the landfill. On August 8, 2006, we had a quarter-page, a PowerPoint presentation on the landfill, again, and what steps we're taking, could state to increase the life of the landfill, everything in appropriate timeframes, and it comes here tonight, our action on it. So, yes, the public is totally aware, because we had study sessions, and every year is discussed at budget time. Mr. Menucha?
The, the environmental impact report will be prepared by the Los Angeles County Sanitation District. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian, excuse me, Councilmember Menuchaan.
You go first, Tom.
We will be retaining a consulting firm to actually prepare it.
Since although the LA CST is preparing the EIR.
They will oversee the preparation of the EIR.
Preparing it and overseeing it are?
Correct. I agree with you. So, it'll be a consulting firm that will do the actual work, and we will also involve our planning department, environmental section, as needed, to coordinate that.
And it's going to cost $750,000.
That's the estimate we have now. We base that as--
We're paying for it?
We're paying for this portion of it. Keep in mind, this is about a 12-month process, and what we presented to you was an overall 42-month process to go through all of the permitting and so forth. We have an obligation on the environmental review. The sanitation districts have the obligation on the permitting portion of the process.
Mr. Yusefian?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to pass your memory. When was the last time that, do you remember when you were appointed, along with Brian Ellis, by Ginger Brenberg, to deal with the landfill extension?
The late 1980s.
1980s. So, this is not a new concept. I mean, I, I understand what Herbert is saying. Herbert's saying, "What if I moved into this city yesterday, and I wasn't around, and I didn't know?" And I think he would have a case for that. But for many of us who've been in this city for many, many years, and have followed it, and the city's been a passion for us, we have been involved, and we have known about many of these issues. So, it's not the first time. It's not a new item. We've been planning for years and years and years. So, to me, it's, you know, maybe the average Joe doesn't see it, maybe it's not out there, but in 1980s, that when we did this, I don't think Internet was even running.
No.
So--
Neither was email.
You know? So, I mean, that's, that's the whole thing. A lot of these things started way, way early, and you plan. You can't just think about expanding a landfill overnight. So, it didn't happen overnight. There were many discussions. I remember going to at least one or two of those. Brian used to tell me, because he was member of a homeowner association, he was to tell me what was going on, and so on and so forth, and we talked about having a material recovery facility there, what the cost will be, and hence, the gas came out of there. At one point, we put plants up there to basically burn the gas and generate electricity. They can, they yanked those things out of there, said you can't operate them, so then we had to put a pipeline down. So, there's a lot of things that went in, into doing this. So, it didn't happen overnight. So, just wanted that to come out.
I chaired the committee at the time. We came up with reports for the council. Okay, no further discussion. Roll call.
Councilmembers Menuchaan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. What's next, please?
Nine is hearings, and at nine A is Director of Planning regarding historic resource designation and Mills Act contract for property located at 1035 Hillcroft Road. At nine A one is resolution denying designation for the residential property located at 1035 Hillcroft Road as a historic resource.
Thank you. Who am I going to? You gotta open a hearing. Do we need a staff report? Just open the hearing?
We do have a staff report, right?
Yes, sir.
I believe we do, so let me see.
We have a present, a short presentation.
Presentation for you. And you have a public hearing, so let me suggest we give the staff report. We can bring it up.
See, you didn't break that, did you, sitting over there? I know, it's, it's not on my idea. Was there an amended agenda? I know I got the info for this, but--
Yes, there was.
There was an amended agenda.
I have the old agenda. No wonder I was ready to close it up.
You too, Mr. Mayor.
Well, since I don't have an agenda in front of me.
Very.
Very. That's kind.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Tomic, and I am the Historic Preservation Planner for the city of Glendale. And this particular property is located at 1035 Hillcroft Road. It is owned by Kevin and Michelle Lopez. They have applied to be listed on the Glendale Register of Historic Resources. It is located in the Rossmoyn neighborhood. It was built in 1939, and it was constructed in the Italian Renaissance Mediterranean revival style of architecture. This property was evaluated for listing based on the Glendale Register VII criteria. The Historic Preservation Commission determined that it was not eligible for listing on the Glendale Register due to the loss of integrity due to alterations to the windows, garage doors, rear facade, and roof. It also was not one of the best remaining examples or most distinctive in the neighborhood. It is also not a significant work of local architect Graham Latta. And here are some pictures where you can see the front facade, and the upper windows have been replaced with aluminum casement windows. Here's a detail. Again, another detail of the rear. An addition that has been added on to the rear. And again, another view. And then a picture of an inappropriate garage door. So, based on those criteria, the Historic Commission would like to recommend denial of this, this property to the Glendale Register, and also Mills Act contract.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. I have no cards. I will close the public hearing. With the pleasure of the council. Mr. Yusefian?
Move to approve staff recommendation and denied project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Resolution nine A one.
Nine A one.
It's a beautiful, it's a beautiful house.
It's a beautiful home, but it's not historic, because I was born in 1939. Any house was built that year is, it's not historic yet. I'm sorry. If I live another 20, 30 years, it'll be historic. Mr. Najarian?
I, I also want to say, it is a very beautiful home.
Oh, it is.
I would die to live in a house like that. Do you want to buy it?
You want to die?
I'm not in a position to buy it at this point, but, I mean, I think this is the type of house that, that really gives Glendale its character and charm, so.
Well, and following the LEED standard, they did the right thing with the casing windows on the second floor.
Okay.
They're dual painted.
That's nice levity. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilmembers Menuchaan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Wintaro?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Who was the second on that? Mr. Menuchaan?
Councilmember Menuchaan.
I said he was. What is next, please?
A new business?
No.
Is there a motion?
Stand adjourned at 8:10 PM.